This quarter, you call the roll please.
This quarter.
Present.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Coe.
Here.
Mr. Matt.
Here.
This town's ringing. Mr. Robinson.
Here.
Okay, please rise to the pledge. If I can say this in my pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, in whose court we're the liberty and justice of all. Okay, anybody sign up to speak tonight, the slides?
Not this evening.
All right, fantastic. I say that because there were a lot of people signed up to speak on Monday. All right, then before you give the meeting minutes from February 16, 2023, can you review them at this time for any additions, deletions, and/or corrections? I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented unless there are changes. Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Kirk, can you call the roll please?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Abstain.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
This quarter. This quarter.
Aye.
I need.
More ayes than a no's.
Okay, just as everybody is aware, not to single anybody out, but we do have a trustee that is attending remotely. Hearing is a little difficult over the system if people are conversating, if you will, underneath the microphone. So I would try to keep conversations to a minimum so that the trustee voter can hear. That puts you to, Ms. Kirk, when we try to call the roll, we're going to speak to you so she can hear you. So, all right. Up first, we have some promotions. So we have a new kind of way of doing things. Normally, it's a clerk show, but tonight, we're going to have the chief step in. How do you want to do this?
Well, you want to just read the first bio and like.
So first, we are going to have Sergeant Jim Neblock, because that's the last time I'll be able to call you that. If he stepped up here, he would. Lieutenant Neblock, that's a lieutenant here. So soon to be new lieutenant Neblock had served in the United States Air Force for five years, taking part in Operation Enduring Freedom and Operation Southern Launch. He graduated from the Illinois State Police Academy in 2004, beginning his civilian law enforcement career with McHenry County Sheriff's Department. He joined the Hampshire Police Department in 2006, and he and his wife Melissa and four children moved to the Hampton community. He was a member of the ILEAS Mobile Field Force, a field training officer, and a firearms instructor before becoming, being promoted as sergeant in 2015. I'm cheerful of that. This room looked a lot different though.
Really?
He established a successful firearms training program and is currently responsible for ensuring all officers receive the necessary training within the Hampshire Police Department. So that's his bio. And so how did you want to handle this, Chief? Do you want to do the honors or do you want to make him sing his favorite song first? The long one, Free Bird. The air guitar solo is worth it, I promise you.
Aye. I, James Neblock, do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of lieutenant, of the office of lieutenant, of the village of Hampton. Illinois.
Illinois.
According to the best of my knowledge.
I already told him the badges are not my responsibility because the one time I sworn an officer, he left his badge. So if you have a minute before you go shaking everybody's hand, can you introduce the team with you tonight?
This is my aunt, uncle, my step-parents, my sister-in-law, my wife, one of my daughters, my son, my mom, my dad, my grandma, my son-in-law, my two grandbabies, my daughter.
Anyone else for, anyone else? Want to claim more? All right, fantastic, congratulations again.
No, I don't. Thank you for your interest.
Well, no, we'll get there. We have one more.
So hold that.
Yeah, no, we'll, I promise we'll get there. We got another one, so we might as well let everybody do their ones. All right, up next. We have another promotion. So, Mr. Cody Greenley, Officer Greenley, can you step up here, please? Call Officer Greenley, listen to his place. Last time.
No, this is a sketch.
Okay, I'm only going to read this if you smile a little bit.
Yes.
Sergeant Greenley earned his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from the University of Wisconsin at Parkside in 2018. In the same year, he joined the Richmond Police Department and met his wife Alexa. Sergeant Greenley then transferred to the Lake Villa Police Department before finding his place in the Hampshire Police Department. Sergeant Greenley has served as school resource officer for two years and has received numerous accolades in his time at the Hampshire Police Department, including Officer of the Year in 2021. Couldn't be more excited. Congratulations, sir.
Hi, Cody Greenley. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of sergeant.
The duties of the office of sergeant.
Of the village of Hampton.
Village of Hampton.
According to the best of my, according to the best of my.
Okay, so now, now it's our favorite part. Do you have a favorite song you want to sing, which is? Now it's time for a picture. Well, you, you mentioned that you brought your wife with you. Who else came with you?
My wife Alexa.
Okay, all right, awesome, fantastic. So now it's time for pictures. So anybody, let's, you can do the family pictures first, or where, however, wherever you want to do it. It's typically, we move the chairs, you guys do family pictures underneath the big H. If you don't want to do that, it's fine too. I'm not trying to force anybody into anything. Sure, whatever. Do you want the only one too, or just the mirror?
We see them all the time. I want to see those. Sorry, I'm going to be the pink one. Should we angle it towards the teach?
Yeah, that'd be good. Angle a little, guys. There you go.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to call it that. The toes.
You guys want to take family photos? You want some?
I think Cody and Matt are going to take it. Yeah, we're going to take a picture.
Mom, you want to get in there for a pic? Or you want to take it? Yes.
Oh, mom, get in there.
Get in there.
He does smile.
Picture that, please. Eight by ten?
Anyone else, family?
My wife.
Okay, we got to get one with all the options that are here.
Oh, yeah.
Like having with your kids then?
Now, we're going to take everybody back to the, it's a permit, so you can have your pictures.
Really, you're solid.
Yeah.
On your whole board.
Yes.
Come on, dog. You don't have a choice. Take the hat off.
A little stand.
We can move the flag.
Tell them what we for. Come on.
Turn yourselves on an angle, just squeeze in. Everybody angled towards her. Get in there.
Come on, dog, take that, too.
Squeeze a little closer, everyone. In there. Everybody shins.
Kind of like you guys like each other.
See how long they can hold still.
All right, one more. You guys, they're all supposed to smile, now.
Yeah. He'll smile. Smiling someone dressing tomorrow.
Just so it's not me. How could you?
Would you know that I'm supposed to smile?
Smile. They're here.
Roll with it, guys. What are you going to do? Did he leave?
Yeah.
Oh, he left.
That's fine. I'll come by the TV or something. Yes, sir, we didn't figure it out. Hey, what works?
I knew it was going to work. You got short six. Yeah, you've been down that road.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to kind of get one here. So now it's time to say good evening to Mr. Edges.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we would ask the boards consideration of an ordinance amending Village Code Chapter Five, Building Regulations Regarding Automatic Sprinkler Systems in Storage and Building Structures. We have with us tonight, Jody Rameckel from the township, our township supervisor. Also Chief Herman is here with his team, who's been working with the department, our building department, Josh Nye on this, on this ordinance. So with that, Josh, you.
Yeah. Sure. So the Hampshire Township recently acquired about the requirements for a storage building that they plan to put up on their site. When St. Phil and I met with them, our building official explained that newly adopted codes included a requirement that all new commercial structures have automatic sprinklers, no matter what you use, no matter what the size. He also noted that this is atypical from the standard fire code. There was a lot of discussion about sprinklers when this was happening, and the prior building official just included kind of this blanket that all structures, no matter what, should have sprinklers. And that is, like I said, atypical from the standard fire code, which does allow for some standard exceptions. For example, a storage area that's less than 12,000 square feet and less than three stories generally is not required to have sprinklers. So what this ordinance proposes to do is, number one, add some of those exceptions back in just for storage type buildings. It wouldn't be for assembly type buildings such as restaurants and churches. It wouldn't be for manufacturing facilities or anything like that. It would just be for storage buildings. And then the other thing this code does is clarify a couple of points about sprinklers when it comes to commercial remodels. So there was, there's been some questions about that, and this will put back in an exception that if a space, a commercial space, for example downtown, that is being remodeled and it's a small space, less than 3,000 square feet, then it is not required to take on the added burden of putting in a sprinkler system. And that was all discussed with and is also recommended by the fire district, and they're here to speak on that if you have questions as well. So we just ask for your consideration of this ordinance, which effectively will allow some standard exceptions to keep these from having to come back to the village board for a waiver each time.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Ray or our fire department officials or Ms. Rameckel?
I have one for the fire department. Did J.D. Cave's building out there have a sprinkler system?
When it burned?
Yes.
No. And they house.
It had a whole fire alarm system. But that would be over your square footage.
Right, but that housed vehicles.
Correct. A building of that size in this town would require, because it would be over the 12,000 square foot.
Right.
And the other thing I will mention, all of our buildings will have a full fire alarm system in it, all detection, smokes, heats, and pull stations. Go back to 1997, that's when we implemented all that, and I'm very proud to say that we are a very safe community. Over 200 of our 300 occupancies in this town have fire alarm and/or sprinkler systems in it.
Mr. Kelly.
Yeah, just, I want to, I guess one is a clarification, the other one's a question, maybe Chief, it's you. But the clarification is, so this is any new construction or remodel at 50% or more would be the exception for storage, classified storage facilities. Correct?
That's the exceptions we're putting back in.
Okay, and the storage facility has to be under 12,000 square foot? Correct. If it's over the 12,000, it will require the sprinklers. And then for group, the other exception listed in here is single floor area building containing Group B or M occupancy. It's not required if the single floor area exceeds 5,000, does not exceed 5,000. And many of the downtown is B and M, correct?
Correct.
How does that work when above many of these buildings are residences or apartments? And is there any concern that while the, the business structure itself is under 5,000 square foot? In many cases in these downtown areas, there are apartments above them. And also the buildings are all connected.
Right.
So it's not like a single individual 5,000 square foot.
Right.
Business would be on its own as a standalone, could you get there in that time? But, but the way downtown, it's really just one continuous structure.
And the way the, the fire district and St. Phil and I all discusses and put it into the code this way, based off that very conversation, is the reason it says the single occupied floor area is purposeful to be meant for just that business. So if it's part of a multi, or not a multi-unit, but a building that's connected to other buildings, has this downtown, or if it has a residential above it, it's just looked at as its own space right there, that business owner that has control of that space.
That part I understand. I guess, Chief, maybe this is for you. Is there any safety concern when you have people living in apartments above a, a business, especially many of them being restaurants or food service or ones with there are different taxpayers. Accidents that can happen. Is there any concerns? I know, I know health department requires over hoods that there's a fire system over a, over a stove or a kitchen or something like that. But is there any concerns at all that we wouldn't have fire protection when there is residential area above a business? Yeah, it falls into a mixed use or taxpayer then, so that actually the sprinkler system, I believe, would kick in. I would have to confirm that for Mr. Kelly. I will tell you the two that you're referring to, which is above the Garden Berry and the new business next to, or to be the Allstate or State Farm. The stairwell or the residential area is already sprinkled for those two units with a full fire alarm system throughout both first floor and second floor. So the stairwell is sprinkled. Right, but the business underneath where the fire is going to go up. I'm making assumptions, not being a firefighter. No, you're right. It's going to go up. It's a concern. Yeah, okay. And so if I heard you right, a building that has a mixed use like that is not covered under this exception? That would actually be different. We, we'll have to refer to St. Phil, I don't have to get the exact answer on that, but when you put a residential above that, it changes it. Okay, because I know we have those, and then there's also the one above the garage, Roy's Garage, the brick building at the, on the corner of Kaizen and State. So I, I think there's a couple. That's why I just was. James Motors as well. James is another, yeah. So that's, I guess that's where, if we can get clarification on that, yes, we'll take care of that.
Any other questions? Any other questions, comments, concerns?
One, on the second page of the memo, page eight, it says that this exception, however, does not apply to buildings classified for high life safety concerns. What is high life safety concerns?
So those are my worries. I was just, I didn't want to list all the several different types again. So kind of how we describe the high life safeties would be those hazardous, you know, facilities with hazardous stuff in them, manufacturing or industrial facilities where classified as assembly locations such as churches and restaurants with occupancy. So where prior, prior where it says B and M classifications, those are your standard, just like retail businesses, basically. Anything but that is kind of what we consider high life safety.
There's a list of commodities that falls under that high hazard area that automatically kicks in that's from. How do we know when a storage facility has those type of? Well, that's all part of the plan review. They have to tell you what commodities they have storing in. They do, okay. All right, and then when you go do regular inspections, do you? Yes.
Then the inspection now is triggered due to our recent change that if the tenant changes too, like if somebody's renting a facility, right? Is that not true? So like the, the inspection is triggered worse. Or like, you know, I guess an example, I used the Garden Berry as an example, right? They changed tenants from Sam and his family. When that happened, automatically there's a review.
And that now it triggers a life safety inspection. I'm less concerned when a new tenant comes in and more a tenant that's been there for years as a storage facility and all of a sudden they start storing other type of materials. Knowing that on an annual basis, your, your department will have visibility in that is, yeah, reassuring.
I just have one more, just a, just a comment. I mean, I know we're very, very cautious when it comes to the fire code and we don't want personally, I, it makes me very uncomfortable having all these exceptions because I don't want something to happen and then it's an exception. So, I mean, I defer to the expertise of our, of our fire department and, and their comments and the things that they feel are safe for the village. So that doesn't make me feel any less queasy.
Just remember, under the M mercantile and the B business, we're still stricter than the international fire code by itself. We, we as Hampshire are still stricter. And we actually looked at some towns that were comparable to us and came up with those numbers versus having to come back, as Mr. Ray said, constantly to check, to have you guys exempted.
Even with all the exceptions.
This is a fair number based on our conversations that we had.
Even with all the exceptions that we've allowed, because I know I've voted on, I think, I've only been here less than two years and I probably voted on four or five.
Well, we've been, we've, we've been actively trying to change our code and update it to make it more reflective of the community and surrounding areas. And it's really been a project over the last two years, which is why you guys are seeing more and more of this stuff and why previous boards have not. And so it's because it's really been a priority of ours to kind of update the code rather than asking for different exceptions to your point all the time.
I appreciate it. It's just, it makes me nervous, so especially with.
And the thing about the stores occupancies, you know, it's very small chance of a life safety issue because the buildings are small. It's storage. If a fire breaks out, first of all, the fire alarm system is going to go off for early notification. Second of all, the people should be able to get out of the building relatively quickly because they're small buildings. And there's not going to be that many people in those types of facilities. So that's how we look at it.
Thank you, too.
Sure. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Sorry, one more question, just for clarification. Where, where we're talking about mixed use. Is a mixed use building still considered Group B or M, or does it have a different classification?
Mixed use means it has more than one of those classifications. So it could be, for example, it'd be on the bottom and a residential on the top, and that makes it mixed use. Under those conditions, what I understand from, from Patrick and, and the fire district, is that then the stricter requirements of either are what kicks in?
For residential doesn't require sprinklers.
That's why.
Except if you want, you may put it above a commercial occupancy. That, that's, we have to get clarification and we will get that for you. We, we went through this before and we just have to clarify some things, also, Kelly, okay? Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance 23-03, amending the Village Code Chapter Five Building Regulations Regarding Automatic Sprinkler Systems in Storage and Business Structures.
Can I ask that we make an amended way to move on this? In that it's the motion with upon receiving clarification of the mixed use requirement? Is that possible?
Yeah, well, nobody's made the motion, so I can entertain a motion to that back down.
What would, what's going to be upon the effectiveness of the ordinance is effective on the, on the clarification? I, I didn't understand.
So as it stands right now, there's no clarification on the mixed use approach. There is, the chief has said he's going to look at the details for that and come back and, and clarify what that is. My question is, can you make a motion and pass an ordinance like this with the caveat that mixed use is defined and not included if it's separate from a B and M?
I, I
I don't think.
I don't think I advise that.
Okay, that's why, that's why I'm asking.
My suggestion would be table it and get the clarification and then pass, pass it one time with everything in that you're looking.
I, I was just asking, because that's something I brought up, I'm not.
Well, I, nobody's made the motion, so I was entertaining one, which, you know, anybody can make a motion at any time, so I don't need to, I don't need to change that. So I guess, I guess let's, to get the flavor of the board here, would you rather table this discussion or approval of the ordinance until the clarification or is the board comfortable moving forward?
I just, even if I could just interject, I believe there is urgency to township in terms of instruction.
We did. We did.
One nation, we need to, we need.
What's flavor of the board here? Trustee, vote. Herman's good with it, I'm good with it. Chelsea Robinson? Justice Goshrie.
Either way.
Trustee Kelly?
I like the clarification, but.
I will, I will entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as presented, but I still. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Trustee voter. Thank you.
I would also be more comfortable tabling it and not voting on something that is incomplete.
So I got two and three. I don't mean to be insensitive to the two trustees that have concerns, but Chief Erman, you said that you're going to dig into this. Is this something you provide in a regular presentation? And then if there's changes that we do.
And we just say, you know, if that's, if that's the case and the board feels that's wrong about it, then we can just amend that to put sprinklers in those.
As long, as long as there's an understanding that that can happen and staff understands that it's based on the outcome, we're good with that.
As long as we understand exactly what Mr. Kelly was looking.
As long as we understand exactly what Mr. Cal is looking for, we'll make sure of that. And then if it's not what you're looking for, we'll bring it back to the board. We'll reconsider.
Yeah, I mean, just sharing my own opinion, I would be more comfortable if mixed use was not included.
So to that end, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as presented with the understanding that the clarification is coming and that if there are changes that need to be made, this will be brought back up.
So moved.
Questions, comments, concerns? Can I add the role bubble please, Mr.?
Mr. Coth.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Straney.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Liz Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask you, uh, let you know that the next two items are bracketed, items B and C will require two separate votes, but they are bracketed and you have one single agenda supplement in your packet of Mr. Ray. Um, so the first, uh, and I will tell you that, uh, we have online with us, Mr. Paulson, who will speak to the, is available to speak to this. And also Shawna Erlacher, who is the, um, principal, that was in the second motion uh, for the professional service agreement with Urban Hydro Engineering, Inc. She's a grant writer who we, uh, are recommending that we secure for this grant. So with that, we would ask your consideration for a resolution authorizing a grant application to the FEMA pre-disaster mitigation program for a storm sewer infrastructure project at the intersection of Park Street and Rin Avenue. And I would tell you that this, um, I believe the board is aware of this, but this grant has already been approved by FEMA. So we, our grant has been, uh, we did five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So that, Josh.
Yeah, just to give you a little bit of history, in the spring of twenty-two, Senator Duxworth's office opened up her congressionally directed spending uh, program that, that the federal government puts out. It's essentially an earmark process where the village can apply for specific programs uh, within the federal government. Uh, the, I think we submitted three applications to different programs and this one was a stormwater reduction project through FEMA's pre-disaster mitigation program. Uh, we were awarded, I shouldn't say awarded, we were earmarked on five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for this project, which may fund up to eighty percent of the costs. Um, we still have to apply hence the, the next motion and we still have to meet some, uh, pretty strict criteria, but uh, we are told that, um, the Illinois Emergency Management Agency and the FEMA representatives will assist us along with our professionals to help us get there. So we're confident that we'll get this money. And then in addition to support the rest of the project costs, Senator Cyberson, uh, can secure us a state member initiative grant for an infrastructure project and that's a very broad term, any kind of infrastructure. And that's a hundred and fifty thousand. So that will cover the twenty percent share that the village is required to put up. Um, so the total project cost will be somewhere, they're still engineered to be done to determine the actual project budget and scope. Um, but it should be right around six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars and should not impact the village's operating or capital funds much. Um, as Mr. Hedges stated, Shawna Herlocker is a professional engineer for Urban Hydro. Uh, she is familiar with the FEMA grant process, which is complex. And we believe that she will be instrumental in helping us, uh, get to the finish line. So we would also ask in the next motion, your consideration for professional services agreement.
Do I have any questions for Mr. Ray, Mr. Hedges? Yeah, I guess some awesome.
And just to clarify, because we're applying for a grant, but then Mr. Hedges, you're saying we've got, we received this grant. So is this just a formality or?
Uh, it is a formality, although I, I'm not sure that Congress would say that necessarily out loud, but it is what Josh called the congressional directed spending. It's much like an earmark. In fact, at the federal level, they do call them earmarks. And, uh, so it's similar to a hundred fifty thousand dollar grant from Senator Seers.
So we're not competing against the other, this might help for this project for us and the grant application is more just a on the paperwork to get the funds.
Correct, but the paperwork's very complex and, uh, we need an expert to do that. And we felt that, well, well, Mr. Paulson has some expertise in this area. Um, Shawna, I don't know if you have your camera on or not, you don't have to, but, uh, Shawna has, it turns out that in our first conference call together, the two of them worked together before on similar projects. So, hi Shawna, thank you.
Hi.
Shawna has experience with this type of grant and she might be able to tell us, Shawna, how do the, um, FEMA folks that, when you asked them about, uh, our grant being uh, confirmed, I think they said you, they'll make sure we receive the money. Is that what you said? Something to that effect?
Right. I mean, unlike some of the other more, the competitive grant programs, in this case, you know, it's been earmarked. Congress has already said they want you to have this money. So FEMA is going to do everything they can to make sure that you get that money. Uh, we still have to show that we meet all of the grant requirements. Uh, we still have to submit everything we would normally submit and these applications are, uh, very, very thorough and, uh, very complex. So, um, there's calculations involved and all kinds of different requirements we have to meet, but, um, in the end, they are going to do everything they can to make sure you get that money.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Does the board have any questions? Um, I will, I will entertain motions separately, even though these are quote unquote bracketed. I will entertain a motion, uh, to approve resolution twenty-three dash oh four, resolution authorizing grant applications to FEMA pre-mitigation, mitigation disaster program for stormwater infrastructure project at the intersection of Park and Rin.
Seconded.
Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Clark, can you call the role please?
Mr. Paul Straney.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coth.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Motion passed, six zero.
I will now entertain a motion to approve a professional service agreement with Urban Hydro Engineering, Inc. in the amount of twenty-five thousand nine hundred dollars. So moved. Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Clark, can you call the role please?
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Straney.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Coth.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly. Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Motion passed, six zero.
Thank you for joining us this evening and for answering our questions. Uh, Mr. Hedges, I, I'm a little out of order here. Can, can I, um, Mr. Phanin is here at the end of our agenda. Um, it, it seems that he's got a lot going on tonight. Is it possible that we can move his, this section of your business up?
With the consent of the board, he certainly may.
Is it okay if we move, uh, Mr. Phanin's presentation is out of the new business section at the end of the agenda to, um, is it okay if he goes now?
Yes.
Okay. Now, as opposed to the fire, having us have a discussion, you've got things to do. I don't want to keep.
He doesn't have the bartender.
No, I understand. You've got things to do. So are you, are you prepared to go right now?
Uh, well, I didn't bring you, I took a Jane, uh, I just walked through. I can bring you guys a survey.
So, all right, hold on. Is the board okay with, with him going now?
Yeah.
Okay, please, uh, please come up to the podium. And I'm sorry, I'm throwing a curve ball at you, but.
No, that's fine. I can, I just thought you had something you were going to share with.
Okay, that's fine. You, you can interrupt us. That's fine. Just however you have.
I mean, I can send you a copy of it and everything.
That's fine.
Uh, so I've been wanting, uh, been looking into putting an outside seating area in my bar. Um, in the front, there's no, uh, fire lanes out there like that. I have no room to extend side to side. Uh, so I'd like to put an outside seating area outside in the front. Um, I've had a couple of companies over there to give me, uh, estimates, uh, basically the layout, uh, which I will provide as well. I didn't know if I had to today.
So the reason, the reason that he's here is because right now in our current liquor commission code or our liquor code, we don't allow beer gardens of any kind unless there's food that's served. And so technically he's not going to, you don't have plans for an outdoor bar or anything like that.
No, it's not going to be out. This is the.
Just a matter of patrons being able to take their drinks out at a sit at a picnic table in front of the establishment and days that are.
Don't they, they do it at the other one at the marathon.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, this will just be a gated, uh, a gated, so it won't be just flagged down or, or caution taped or anything like that. Uh, so it'll actually be a structure that'll be in there. Um, and.
To your point, it's nothing anything different than like even Copper Barrel for that matter and the fact that they have the outdoor dining, but Copper Barrel has food to go along with it.
Well, and it's more specific than that. The code.
I got pizza.
There you go.
That's food by dictionary terms.
The code refers to restaurants as outdoor seating and then we license restaurants for outdoor seating. That's what the code says. We have never done that because during COVID, we were very open about everything like this, including the concerts that they've been having down the street or down the mall from Jared. So, uh, those concerts that they had, open liquor, uh, uh, now over there is not permitted outdoors. And so if that happened, we're going to have to stop that as well unless this board acts. So really the question tonight is not a motion or anything, but it's a question is, is this board, uh, does this board support outdoor seating for the three bars that we have on? That's, uh, that's, and we're not asking for you to, that's, that's what Jared's here for.
Yes.
I do.
Yeah.
So with that, he's going to, um, present formal plans and we're going to have to get, with the liquor commission's going to have to meet and adjust.
Actually Jared doesn't have to do anything for that purpose. Um, we can, we can wrap the proper, uh, governance for the board and for the liquor commission.
So let's say, because they don't apply to any, anyone with that liquor license.
Right. And so he would have to have a different class of license. I'm assuming.
We just have to work on the code to permit outdoor seating of bars. Okay. So just give us a little time.
So the electric commission will meet and we'll, we'll hash some of this stuff out and then bring it to the board for final approval, but we didn't want him to go through any work or whatever, not knowing whether it was okay.
He just asked to share his ideas.
Yeah, and I, you know, I'll put, uh, concrete barriers up there. So, you know, my patrons will be protected, you know, because I know there's cars that, you know, drive through the lot as well. So, um, it's not like I'm just going to put a fence there.
No, you're, you're, uh, commercial landlord is fine with.
Absolutely, yeah.
Can you describe just a little bit? Because I understand that you said concrete, that's like a half wall. I mean.
Yeah, so, um, Mr. Burklo, he has a couple of concrete barriers that he said that we could put in there or we would have the concrete or dumber and be the posts in front of the, in front of the gate. So, you know, if there's cars ever or anything like, it's just a safety. You see it like in front of stores, you know, so people don't crouch through.
Target's a big one that, yeah.
So Walmart, they have the big posts and stuff, you know, their doors in case cars go crazy and park in that type of situation. Just keep everyone safe.
So this is a, it's a temporary, it's, I mean, it's temporary. It's not a permanent type structure. It's just barricades.
It would be, it would be an aluminum gate. It would be a aluminum gate.
So it is an actual gate?
Yeah.
Okay.
The additional concrete.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just picturing just a couple of concrete barriers and I thought that was nice.
I got some drawing plans. I didn't know if I'd bring them here today, you know, uh, just because there wasn't any ordinance. Uh, but I had a couple of companies come out already and draw, uh, basically what the plan would be. So.
Does that change anything for something or shielding requirements?
Nothing that Jared's proposing is what we would suggest be required. Because of the other buildings that have those kinds of, or they may choose not to. We don't require any kind of barrier protection.
But I mean, that, that outdoor, that's, there's no, nothing that he needs to be aware of or cautious of with zoning types for outdoor versus just indoor.
We've had those conversations. He's okay with that. It's just a matter of opening outdoors, liquor, open liquor consumption outdoors. That's the only thing that is not permitted right now that he would ask you to do.
And if I could just follow up then, because we talked about the music, do you, do you have any intentions of having entertainment outside on that area?
Absolutely.
But they, he would, he would be, uh, we have the sound, not sound ordinance, but disturbing of the peace and then, you know, as far as like public nuisance and that kind of stuff. So, you know, I'd imagine if he's having wild parties at midnight, the neighbors are going to have things to say about it. So he'll have to work through that product as well. We may have to look at whether his ordinance are different times. I, I think we do have those in place for residential, but I don't know what we have in place here.
We come back with an ordinance with just all this.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of them, you know, like I have a band, you know, ten o'clock at night until one o'clock in the morning. Um, just like I do now inside my bar. Um, I usually have, you know, the band or, uh, a singer come in at like seven, eight o'clock. They're done by ten o'clock. Um, and then, you know, during the nicer months, uh, when the, uh, the farmer's market's going on, you know, uh, talking per clue and stuff, we're talking about, uh, blocking it off. Uh, basically get some bands or car shows and stuff like that over there too. So, and what I've been reading is just, you know, outdoor seating, you know, for a bar does bring in like thirty percent more revenue, you know, for business owners as well. So it's just something that not any bar in town has and I, I, I think I really benefit and I would benefit from, uh, like that, uh, just outside. So enjoy and drink.
Trustee Fodor, I don't want to forget that you're here again. Do you have anything that you'd like to add?
I do not. I've been listening intently.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm good. If the board is good, we'll, we'll proceed forward and you can go handle it. Now you don't have to stay for the rest of it. You're welcome.
It's just those jersey raffles tonight. Thanks, Jared. No, I appreciate it. Uh, do you have any time to do the plan?
Yeah, just.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you guys.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you, Jake, for letting me call. I just saw a phone ring twice and I'm like, I would like to have done it myself. So thank you.
All right. Um, and so now at this point, uh, you have before you an agenda supplement, uh, on page twenty-three of your packet, uh, from Mr. Ray. Uh, a couple of meetings ago, I do trust you both and several of you asked about alarm fees and wanted to give you the history first of all. The amount of, the number of fees and the, uh, excuse me, the number of violations and the number of fines and then the total amount and who the fines are for. Um, so as, as we, as we, I mentioned last time, it's mostly the schools, although not entirely the schools. Uh, and Josh has done some, uh, research on what other communities do and, uh, discussion. So that you can have a discussion about whether your current fees are currently adequate or whether you'd like to raise the fees. Josh, you'd like to add anything?
I just said if you haven't had a chance to look at the other community's, uh, fine schedule where we are, the Village of Hampshire is already at the highest level and, uh, cites people on the, the soonest defense that their defense is supposed to come after that. So, um, obviously the board can change that if they want. Just wanted to note that.
Just curious, do you know, I mean, because it is the schools, do we know if it's, it's calling the alarm?
No, I can, I can speak to this.
Mike doing it?
I can speak specifically to what typically happens. Um, what typically happens is, um, after hours, the building, there's a, there's an open schedule, like a set schedule when the building's open and closed and when it's going to be staffed and when it's not going to be staffed. Several, um, teachers have keys but not codes and think that they can just come and go as they please and don't realize it and set the alarm off. Or they have a code, but they forget what it is and, or they, they set the alarm, not taking into account that somebody's still in their classroom working. And then the, there's no motion sensors in the classroom and then they walk out into the hallway and the alarm goes off and there's a whole myriad of things. It's not a matter of, because the alarm is not typically set during the day when the building is occupied. So this is all happens when the building's not occupied after hours, weekends, middle of the night. There are things that happen where motion sensors or fire alarms and that kind of stuff, where sensors go bad, but that's not the bulk of what's happening at the schools. And so typically somebody, ninety-nine percent of the time, somebody leaves the building thinking they're in the building by themselves, not looking at the signage sheet or whatever, arms the building, somebody leaves their classroom, alarm goes off, that kind of stuff.
That could happen here too, which is one of those, we're not tied into that. We have a lot of people wandering in and out of the building that have codes.
On the, uh, the fines, is that per year or is that, not the amounts, but the schedule, the two hundred dollars on the third offense, three hundred on the fourth, disconnection of payment is not made. Is that cumulative or is that every year that it starts over?
It rolls over each year.
What do you mean by it rolls over?
It starts over.
Okay, so, so if I look at this then, because the, this is covering three years.
Sure.
So Resource Buckhead and Speedy all had three offenses within the same year.
Right.
And none any of the other years.
Right.
Okay, because it was really hard to understand per year what the impact is because like if you look at Hampshire High School, they, they have less than photo facts.
Yeah.
But they have more offenses.
A much more, uh, expansive spreadsheet really we needed to analyze it in great detail. I just didn't want to overload you with information if it wasn't going to be very pertinent. But yeah, I mean, that's also why the fines are not, uh, uh, super linear. Um, for example, I think it's, you know, Photo Facts had thirteen violations all within, I think, the same year. I don't know if there was a sensor that was bad, but that's why their fees are so high compared to, uh, Hampshire High School, which actually had more violations in total, but less fines because Hampshire High School's violations were over multiple years.
And just so that you're also aware, if, if there's a problem with the system and they're actively working on it, it's up to the building. They can call the alarm company and take it out of service. There's, there's a, there's a process internally for them to, to that, that the fire or police department, rather, doesn't continually get calls if they know a sensor's bad or waiting on a party or that kind of thing. They, they have that ability to do so. A lot of times that doesn't happen, but they do.
And these fines go to the fire department to cover their costs?
Or to go to the police department.
I'm sorry, police department?
I'm sorry, I did it too. I'm looking right at you guys.
So these aren't fire alarms, these are?
Burglar.
Burglar alarms, because it, earlier it was mentioned it was fires.
No, I got, well.
I wasn't sure.
No, I'm the one that messed that up. So I apologize.
So they are, they are police alarms. So chief, what's the cost for us to respond to?
Single alarm, it's, it, you know, it's the, the officer's time, the, it's the taking the officers away from, you know, from other things that they could be doing because it's, it's brought, I mean, when, when there's.
Single alarm, it's it, you know, it's the officer's time, the it's the taking the officers away from, you know, from other things that they could be doing because it's it's brought, I mean, when when these alarms come in, it's it's they're they're assigned to the officers as a, I mean, as a priority call, you know, so so they're going there, not knowing what's going on until they get there and and then takes them away from the rest of the community.
And there's only two officers, correct?
Yeah, and it's always two officers.
And they have to walk the entire facility, no matter which one it is, to clear it before they can.
Well. Unless the staff members present.
And the yeah, and the subscriber error cases was that's what we call that, what what the those president was talking about, that's um, those those we would have to do that. But otherwise, yes, we would have to walk the, you know, if there's an open door, we'd have to walk the road, call another, you know, like the county to come help. And it's a big, so it can be, it can be very expensive. I don't have a number, you know, as far as dollar.
No, but time wise, it's it's a lot of time.
And it takes away from potential emergencies on the other side of town too. Can I, I mean, I understand stuff happens, but that's that's a lot of happenings. Is it possible maybe, because I don't personally, I don't see raising the fines as as something we should do, especially that we're the highest of all of them around here. But is it possible maybe to do an educational one cheater from the police department just as a information and maybe something like that that goes to?
Looks like the middle school's getting educated here for three thousand four hundred dollars. They don't carry certificates of of education.
But it's something out of their paycheck. So it's just a fine.
No, no, it's coming. Yeah, but the problem is respectfully, we've got a lot of schools, a lot of industry, and so if you look at the people around us, okay, Hutton's kind of similar in that regard, but Pigree Grove, I mean, West Undee, they don't have the type of, they don't have as many schools as we have. They don't have the industry that we have. Sugar Grove is pretty close to us and and that, but I don't think that they have as many schools and that kind of stuff. I mean, we send the stuff out, but the problem is to your point exactly, who's gonna read it? You know, like, I mean, we're gonna send it to the principal. It's not gonna get out to the staff and 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 the school district's gonna keep paying. I mean, I'm not looking like this is a cash cow either, but you know, at some point or another, the whole purpose for us establishing this is to try to get our officers to be able to do their jobs instead of having to do stuff that's really, I don't want to say not work because you can't ever not respond. You have to respond, but you can tell this is false alarm. I mean, look at the number.
We raised these fines three years ago purposely to get their attention, and it seems like it hasn't worked. So I'm fine with the fines where they are. I like the double.
Essentially, you say the school district is paying them. We as the taxpayer are paying the school district and they're using that money to pay these fines. So, you know, we're paying for it. It's not like it's not like a cash cow for us.
I know, I'm saying it is.
No, but it's the same. It's the same pot, whether it comes from the school district or it comes from us, the taxpayers are paying.
We can get it. I understand.
So the private businesses, they're doing well. They they a couple of things happened and.
Because it's their.
Because it's coming out of their pocket. So.
I think the private businesses are typically there. It's more of an equipment malfunction or.
Okay.
You know, they may have a series of alarms where they're they're incurring fees because they've had a multiple alarm, but it's actually it's it's an equipment malfunction. And then once they take care of it, the alarm's still waiting. It's it is the employees at the schools that.
And that's Mr. Ray, what you're saying about photo fax was that it was like a equipment issue. I'm guessing all because it's so high, all thirteen happened in one year.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know that. That's what I'm assuming for sure.
I mean, I did the calculation and photo, because I was trying to figure it out. Photo max didn't overpay based on our fines. And if it rolls over every year, that means that was all within one year that they have had. Whereas if if we didn't roll or reset every year, the middle schools, seven hundred dollars under what the fines would have added up to, the high schools, eleven hundred dollars, the elementary school, six hundred, that adds a thousand.
Well, if you look at this sheet, of the ninety-two offenses total, the schools take up forty-five percent of that.
Right.
I mean, there needs, and I'm the first one to be pro school, as you all know. And I'm not trying to tell the school just to kind of do their business, but maybe there needs to be some education in these schools about what are the working hours you can be in the building? What is the procedure if you're there after working hours? Because we can't afford to keep sending our police officers out there to false alarm calls when they have better things to be doing.
They're also outside of ten eight, which is a lot lower offender than any, but they're also the largest buildings that you have to sweep.
Exactly.
And they take the most.
That high school is gigantic. I didn't middle school.
Right.
But, you know, we don't.
Gary D doesn't have any. Gary D Wright, so just Hampshire Elementary School, Gary D Wright's never had an alarm issue.
This is in the last three years, you find, so.
Gary D Wright's been home for like ten or more.
Fifteen.
Fifteen years.
Yeah, all I'm saying is this data is only from twenty twenty or twenty.
But that's what I'm saying. In that same time.
Right.
There is a school, a full elementary school within our jurisdiction, that hasn't had one single incident or not one single fine.
Which means the principal's doing his job or her job.
It could also be that they've had up to two each year and just didn't make our data sheet because they weren't charging.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
They're not on this data.
Right.
They've never been fined in three years.
I get it. Accidents are gonna happen, but this is sixteen.
That's a trustee coach comment, though. I think that shows that that school is either doing the right thing or whatever the administration, the principal do or whatever. There is something different about Gary D Wright than there is the other three schools. Yeah, the guy, the people running the school are doing their job. Bottom line.
Plain and simple.
No matter how you can't sugarcoat it. They're doing their job. They told everybody the parameters and they and they hold them to it.
You know, I look at the sheet and I don't know this. We don't have disconnection in here at all, period. I don't want to get into a big PR thing either, but at the end of the day, we don't have any what we have no teeth. We just use to trustee talk.
We have disconnection.
Maybe not.
Right, okay, okay. That's what I'm saying. But like it says, the other, there's other towns on this list that plain and simple say after this month fences in one calendar year, you know, we're doing this. So we we're just like, look, if you don't send us a check, we're gonna turn up. I don't really think it turned up at school.
I'm gonna say.
No, but that but that's but that's my point. This is like, so there's really no other team other than education or raising the fines. I'm all about doing the education thing. We did the education when we first started this. We did this education again recently. We had, I had a member of the school staff reach out and go, how come the village is charging all this money? And it wasn't until I was able to explain, you're taking guys off the street, you know, and it's like you're taking officers off of the street and, you know, and then there's again, running the risk of having to respond to something else that's going on, but we've got two people walking around making sure because of a false alarm call, which is which is also a problem.
Mr. Hedges, have you sat down with the superintendent of the school district to discuss this issue? And or have we had any conversations with them about just how costly much of an outlier their three schools are in the system and that they do have one that's great?
No, I have not. By the way, Big Timber Elementary is not on here either. Their new school has been open a year now.
But this data is for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, but I would suspect that maybe they're new and have good procedures as well at Big Timber.
I've worked with that principal before she didn't give out a whole lot of alarm codes for after hours access. Some principals give them out like they're candy. Some principals keep everything close to the chest and say, this is it.
I just I just wondering, I can do, if I feel strongly about educating them, I'd rather spend my time than than the police departments. And so I I would commit to, I'm not sure the superintendent's the right place to go, rather than the principals first, but I'd be happy to. I've been in touch with the principals a lot lately. So I can touch base with them and find out where they, what their opinion is. Are they just considering this a positive business because they can't get their people to follow the rules? Or is this something that they're not aware of? I'll I'll speak to these three principals.
Well, you can try the PR campaign, but I'm I'm I tend to agree with trustee coat on this. If they're not going to, if they're not going to adjust their habits, we need to raise the fines. I mean, I I don't know what I don't know. I really don't know what else to do.
Because you can't disconnect.
No.
You really can't.
No, I understand.
I think we should let our village manager talk to the the three that run these schools and take this show it to them and ask them how we're gonna fix it and ask them to put it writing to the board how you're gonna fix it. And trustee coat, I think that's a great idea. I would recommend that Mr. Ray, when to prepare Mr. Hedges for this, that instead of just knowing three years clumped, to actually pull a historical trend report so they see that, like the photo max, you can say that's one, that was that was an equipment issue. This is this is a habit. This is an issue, a trend, right?
And we have that. That's I took from Chief Fan's reports to build this, so.
And make sure you include the other two schools so we can show that they're doing all right. Well, it could be two, like you said, but even two is not is not.
That's okay.
Ten or sixteen.
Nobody's saying be perfect. We're just saying try to be at least a little better.
Yeah, I I think that's our only avenue here. I'm I'm against raising the fine for a school because ultimately that money is gonna come out of where it should be going to those kids. And that money is coming from the taxpayer, not the business. The school is not a business. It's taxpayer funded. So. I was gonna say it's raising that fine because they're just gonna keep on doing it. Who do they care? It's not coming out of their pocket.
I guess I guess I see your point because the the fine of the businesses is adjusting the behavior now.
Right. And then ultimately, then who's gonna suffer? Those kids.
Okay.
I think we have good direction.
You have more time in a day? Do you want us to pass an ordinance to turn it to twenty-five hours in the building?
We'll figure it out.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee voter, again, sorry. I don't want to come to you at the end. I don't want to make you think that you're not a part of this.
Nope, I'm good. But thank you.
Okay, next you will see the January financial report and February building report. If you, I should ask, Josh, well, who's run first? Ms. Lyons, do you have anything that you'd like to add or self explanatory?
Happy to answer any questions.
Josh?
I just want to note that I put the wrong report in the packet, but I can put the correct one up on the screen. And the only really notable thing is that there were ten new single family home permits in February, so that pulled our pull our pools for the year actually beyond two years ago already and still have a few months left, sixty-five new home permits for the year. That's just a single family home.
Can you email this the correct report out to the board tomorrow so they can read it?
Absolutely.
Or tonight or whenever. Doesn't matter. But make sure that they have. Okay, the financial report, you have any, anyone have any questions for Ms. Lyons? Great, as always.
Said one up, always have a question, but page twenty-six, under the general fund revenue at the very top, for grant income, it it shows that we've actually year to date have only taken in fifty-eight ninety, and it was budgeted for six hundred and five thousand, six twenty-three. And I'm just trying to figure out what we thought was coming that hasn't. So one of the biggest pieces in that particularly grant line item is the Safe Walks to School or Safe Routes to School, the Safe Walk Program that we are gonna participate in, and we will not expend those dollars. You'll see that again in the general fund budget next year. So that's that's about half of that. And then the other amount is American Recovery. No, 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 sorry, I'm way out. It's ARPA money, which will eventually flow through the general fund and be expended for, you know, some of our summertime projects, et cetera. But we do not do that complete reconciliation until the very end of the year when we have our our final results. So do we have more ARPA money coming or that hasn't been spent or? Uh, no, it's all been expended in full, and we will not be receiving any more to our knowledge.
One quick question. I know I brought this up previously, and I know some of it is the software. When you look at the total village, our actual year to date surplus is a little over a million, aren't they? We have three months left. This is at nine months ended, so three months left out of this. Do you foresee us spending a million more than we're taking in?
No, but I think you you can't really, you're talking about the.
Page one, at the bottom underneath all of the different.
The whole.
Funds.
Yeah, yeah.
The total village amount.
Yeah, so you I would not look at it exactly like that. I kind of look category by category, rather than you know, looking at that million dollar number in the sense that there are some revenues or some funds that you can't spend for overall village purposes. Do I expect it to end like this? Will end in the positive without a doubt overall village. I believe the general fund will also end in the positive. And I mean, I'm not really willing to say exactly a million dollars.
Or should spend, but you're still.
Directly.
There are some, yeah, some pretty big ones, especially in the utility funds, like for instance, the channel grinder has not been paid for. We're still in the process of data upgrades.
As the general breakage is.
Right.
And is that under enterprise or general?
That would be under the enterprise funds.
Okay.
There are still some significant expenditures that will potentially hit, you know, we don't really know. Like, for instance, we're currently investigating whether or not the second half of the Vertra, the de-escalation equipment will be expended during this fiscal year. That's that wasn't even in the budget, but that would be, you know, a hundred thousand dollars that would be expended out of the general fund this fiscal year, offset by grants, but you know, it was still.
But the grant wouldn't be received until the next fiscal year either. So the next fiscal year will look like we have more income than we thought.
Yeah, I think so. If if we know that we are the recipient of those grant funds, so if we actually, you know, it's kind of a, I'm unsure of what is gonna happen. Either we'll have a prepaid for our expense if we don't have the grant funds. We'll we'll match the revenue and expense eventually. So it doesn't, you know, it doesn't hit.
Year in, cut out.
Yeah, no, I completely understand. I mean, I think it's it's credit to the the staff for having the fiscal responsibility to end positive. I just think them back to the budget committee meeting and how they were looking for additional funds. If we have excess funds in one fiscal year that aren't necessarily earmarked, how do we take that into consideration for the budget conversations? And that's why I'm looking at this going, okay. Is there really three different funds? Total village close to a million or is it actually significantly less? Right, so. Thank you.
Any other questions about the monthly reports? Thank you very much for providing them. You look great as always. Well, except Josh, just because we won. Next, you'll have the accounts payable. Please review that as assigned. Are there any questions about the accounts payable?
I have one. It's page thirty-six, twenty-three thousand, they changed the hydrants.
Um, yes, so.
Last three.
Um, I'm just trying to see who does.
Fire and pouring main.
Yep, so the village actually did install a couple of new hydrants on Jefferson Street. You were unfortunately not able to attend the budget committee meeting, but we have a picture of one actually. It was being installed that evening. So we are replacing some, I don't know, many, many years old.
We've got about three left.
We, yeah, and they do a fire hydrant. They gotta dig all the way down to the water main. They just don't unbolt it from some thing laying on the ground or no one. They go right. They have to go all the way down.
And they're very expensive.
So they're usually, they're usually eight feet deep.
Okay, thank you.
And yeah, so there's an additional expense also for Starkenstone who assists us with those with those institutions.
Thank you very much. Uh, page six, which facade program reimbursement is that for? For the twenty. Uh, that's the K. I'm sorry, the.
Blocks, okay.
All right, let me put a check for blocks.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Page forty-two, Third Millennium Association, three past due notices. So those are, that's Third Millennium is our third party printer that prints our utility bills. So those are the past due notices that were sent to those that failed to pay their payment on time. And then it's in three categories because we charge water, sewer, and garbage for the printing of those notices since a portion of those bills are all related to that. How many people do we have that are past due that generates three hundred dollars? So I'm not, I don't have that right off the top of my head. Generally, I would say we issue probably at least five hundred late notices plus.
Some people don't even consider paying their bill until they.
Some people don't pay their bill until they hit the door.
Yeah, and if you remember, that was part of the challenge that we talked about when we were deciding when we were gonna start with the water shut offs too.
One thing that I will tell you that is will be important to our discussion in the future is the fact that when we implement our new Tyler ERP system, we currently have a turn on fee. So if somebody actually is deployed to turn off the water and is successful in turning off the water, when they come in, we will charge them for a turn on fee. That's not the way it's gonna work with Tyler. The minute you are on the shut off list, that's what's going to trigger the fee. So that's.
We've seen some different patterns, I think.
Yeah, I think that they'll understand that it's gonna cost them a lot more. So I mean, some people wait until literally somebody's driving down the street. So, I mean, some people wait until literally somebody's driving down the street from the water department. And, or maybe standing in the yard with the key to turn it off, and then they like rush out and say, please don't shut me up, I'm going down to village hall right now.
I'm just stunned that five hundred out of this small town don't pay their water bills.
It's not this small anymore.
Well, compared, five hundred compared to the total number, twenty percent of our residents don't pay their water bill on time.
Well, we had a, we had a rolling balance, right? Forget what it was at the time. There was a, there was a number, an average number that we utilized at one time that was unpaid water bills, I forget what it was, there was an average that we had when we were looking at that. It's up over thirty thousand, wasn't it, or something like that?
If you'd like, we can get you some real numbers.
No, I, 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 yeah, I don't need it, it's up to the board, if they wanna see it, it's more, it's fine, but at the end of the day.
We discussed it when we thought about the relief.
I don't need it.
So, and I'm surprised that no, nobody knows on the thing, there is, um, there are Tyler expenses in our accounts payable this particular time, and there's the, uh, it says C F S A. And, uh, and there's expenses for that, so I spent about fifteen hours, um, of implementation time with, uh, somebody from the utility billing, um, programming department to discuss our current and future state of affairs. And, you know, we went through all these things, and so one of the things that we went through was our, our billing process, our late fee process, our shut-off notice, you know, like right on down the line. And, um, this is a gentleman that's been with Tyler for a number of years, and he said by far, the Village of Hampshire has the most generous policy with respect to shut-offs. He was shocked.
Maybe we need to revisit that.
I, I don't really think we should, I mean, I mean, I'm thinking here, even just for our PR committee to put it in one of the newsletters, to say, you know, five hundred of the residents, I mean, and it's not, not residents, it's homes, so it's even, it's not twenty percent.
Five hundred out of three thousand.
Out of three thousand.
We just talked about how much it's costing the police department to go out and investigate all these false ones, how much is it costing Public Works to go out and break away from shutting off water at five hundred?
Well, they're also the ones that go out and put the tags on the doors.
And tag the doors.
The tags on the doors.
How much is that costing, so I think we do need to revisit this shut-off policy.
It's part, it's part of the Tyler implementation, I think it's perfect.
I mean, it is, it's funny timing to like click down.
But I do think it should go in a newsletter, just to let people know, the bill is due on the day that says is due.
Well, I understand, we need to put something in the newsletter.
Start listing names.
That they get something if they actually read the newsletter response.
I understand.
Over fifty percent of the people in this village do not read that newsletter, and I'll tell you what, me included.
I'm entering into a contest.
I understand what you're trying to do, but you're trying to get someone to read a newsletter that doesn't even read the water.
Honestly, so we had this conversation, Jay and I had this conversation with an individual one time. And he claimed that he didn't know what was going on around town and this and that, and didn't know about a specific project, and I said, well, that was at the time, you know, we just started the, the newsletter out. And so I said, well, do you follow us on Facebook, he goes, well, no. And I said, well, how about Instagram, Twitter, and that, no, I don't have time for that. And I said, okay, well, do you read our newsletter? And, and, well, it, it comes, it comes with your water bill, no, I don't, I don't have time to read a newsletter, it just sits off to the side. I said, there was an announcement on the top of the actual water bill, no, I just look at the amount. Like, how, how, how am I supposed to help?
This was a business, by the way.
Step by step, you just tell them.
It's like, well, how am I supposed to help you if you're not gonna help yourself?
Well, you can't.
Fifty percent don't read the newsletter.
That doesn't give you an excuse to go rush out and pay your water bills when they're starting to water, you know?
So I'm thinking, so, I'm gonna ask this board, I, I understand it's a pressing issue, and, and, but I'm gonna ask the board to let the, the staff deal with this on their timeline, and the fact that, like, July, August, when they're starting to implement everything anyway, I think it'll be a good time. But if the PR committee would like to do an article, warning people that we're looking into this policy kinda thing, you know, you can do that, but I, I think that, I think that the newsletter articles should probably be timed about all the new software implementation and changing of policies to reflect.
Okay.
I, I, that's just my, you know, whatever, I'm good.
Is it, I'm just throwing this out there, because I have no proof this can be done, but after the third violation, maybe, or after the fourth violation, that they're, they're mandated that they have to have it on automatic pay, so that they.
That's illegal, but can we come up, can we come up in the budget to hire another staff member to monitor that?
Oh.
This is not, this is not really a problem for us right now, we're handling it, we know how to do it, and some months are worse than others, this past month was actually a pretty low number.
The clerk would like to add something, so I gave her permission.
I did have lunch the other day with some of the clerks.
Okay.
And we just talked about shut-offs. And some of them have, for shutting them off, a hundred and fifty. And then another one, shut off seventy-five, shut on seventy-five.
So.
So we're behind.
So, and that's, you, full disclosure, you met with Burlington and Pingree. So those are, those are our neighbors, just add, just add.
Both of Burlington's out frickin' well and sucking.
Just, I'm just saying, those are our, those are our neighbors and they're doing it. And that's not like next, that's not like two towns over or Sugar Grove, like we saw, no offense to Sugar Grove, but that's like, that's next door, so it's time.
And, and it's not like, we know the staff is doing a wonderful job with this, we know you guys can handle it, it, it's not that, it's just like, five hundred water bills, that's costing us a fortune.
Ms. Lyons, you can, can you verify, though, that, uh, a resident or even a business calls on financial hard times, they come in and say, can I set up a payment arrangement and work with you, they're not included in this additional cost, because it's known that their address, their residence is on a payment.
So if they're, if they're currently on a payment plan, we would not include them for the, for the.
So residents do have the option to come in and just seek.
Yes, and, but nobody, yes, so people get their water bills, you know, the first week in the month, and they are seeking assistance from us, uh, probably the day or maybe two before the due date, they, you know, they.
They, they're not proactive, is what I'm saying.
I understand that, I guess what I'm saying is that there are options to help those that call in financial hard times. And the village is always, the village has been very accommodating to that, that what we're talking about isn't necessarily individuals that have sought help. It is, it sounds like habitual reoffenders.
The water department could use the money, uh, you know, we could fund all kinds of stuff with late fees and fines for those that are not paying for the service that they have already received, so, uh, seriously, some kind of fine, and it's, it's, yeah, public works building, um, that could bring down money, but it's, it's not getting through to people, so I mean, if five hundred are behind like that, so maybe a, a significant jolt, um, people realize it's gonna be a, a huge fine, the first time, and the second time, and the third, um, and it, you know, goes higher, that money could be earmarked towards.
So I'm comfortable letting the staff handle this, and they're gonna bring it back to us, but now getting back to the task at hand, the regular accounts payable, any more questions? I will entertain a motion to.
It's all moved.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clerk, can you call?
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Stine?
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
Okay, B D C.
B D C will be meeting next Friday, Wednesday, March eighth, at six thirty. The passage could be on a couple days before the meeting.
Public relations?
No report.
Be careful, there's a dog after you. The dog didn't sign up for public comment, have that stricken from record, please.
She was still talking.
She said a name report.
No report.
Budget?
Uh, budget committee met, uh, two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, a week and a half ago, um. It was the start of looking at the budget, uh, there's a lot there, uh, to my fellow board members, um. If, if you didn't listen to it or watch it, I encourage you to, um, watch it, to see what was discussed. The next budget committee meeting will be on March seventh at six P M. Even if you can't be here in person, I know it's a budget committee meeting, but it is also a working, uh, meeting of the whole, just to get an idea. It, it, it's never fun to have something handed to you and it's all these numbers all at once, by kinda listening in, you kinda have an idea of what's being, what's going on. So, uh, I think that would make it easier and, and probably bring in some additional questions and concerns, um. But, uh, we're looking at that March seventh and six P M. Um, from a email that I recently saw, it looks like we might be having a third meeting, um, of the budget committee, but that has not been finalized yet. Um, if I could say for the meeting, six P M, if anybody has a, my committee members are here, six P M, sound okay for you? Okay, then let's, pardon?
The seventh.
On the seventh, so March seventh, six P M, here at the village hall for the budget committee.
I'd like to apologize, I, I, something came up, I'm very sorry.
Okay.
Oh, it's dinner, is, is this a, sorry, I have a question, is this, uh, just a budget committee meeting, or are you doing it as a meeting of the whole?
I think it's both, I mean, it's a working meeting of the, of the committee of the whole.
It'll be the same as last time, yeah.
Okay, and.
Budget committee.
I think I was misunderstood in the last time, because I didn't know as, as a committee of the whole, if we were allowed to comment and speak, are we to vote on things, since it's committee of the whole?
Committee of the whole is a whole nother ballgame, it's not a working session of the board, and it's not a meeting of the budget committee.
It's never really called a committee of the whole, it's just the, the members of the board are invited to participate and speak, but they wouldn't.
So whoever put the agenda out the last time, specifically said committee of the whole, so it's a working session of the board?
No, I'm, I'm pretty sure it said.
Okay, so it's just a work, we can comment, it can be a discussion, we are not part of the vote.
Yes. I swear it said committee of the whole, because it caught me off guard. But I've been, I've been wrong before, so.
And we'll owe you a quarter.
All right, that's what I'm talking about. All right, uh, uh, other business or new announcements, I've got a couple, but.
I was just gonna add, uh, you all should have received an email today, maybe you haven't had a chance to check your email, but the, um, the first meeting on the budget was scheduled to be on, uh, sixteenth of March, um, however, Ms. Lyons is gonna be, uh, congratulating her daughter and receiving a new granddaughter that week, and we've been waiting for that to happen, and it's gonna happen that week, so we're gonna postpone that, the budget, the first budget meeting of the board until the first meeting in April. So that's why, uh, if you hold a string, you have a little time to have another meeting, we need that time. So just check your email tonight, there's a very detailed explanation on that.
Congratulations thoroughly. Okay, I've got a couple of things, does anybody have anything for the good cause?
I, I just wanted to ask, I said, one meeting was held at the school, about the truck stop, their consensus coming down.
You received, you, you all received an email tonight, um, uh, you, you, you all received a meeting, uh, an invite, or an email tonight with detailed explanation on where we are in the process.
As announcements, I'd like to, to commend Chairman Rock. You ran a phenomenal meeting, um, with two hundred people there that were not always happy, and you handled yourself very well. I, I've sat in the very, very back and just listened, and just wanna commend you, that was amazing.
You know, I had nothing to throw at that one particular person.
Speaking of that, Mike, do we have parameters for our meeting? Because now that these people have gone through, is, they're gonna find to whatever they were saying, so, and they're gonna come back.
On the bottom of every agenda, and has been since about COVID times, actually since, uh, probably, probably since I took over. Uh, on the bottom of every agenda that goes out, on the backside, you'll see this one, this is public comments. Says, uh, village board will allow each person to register to speak a maximum time of five minutes, provided the village president may reduce to three minutes before public comments begin if more than five persons have registered to speak.
Okay, so, if we're gonna.
It was very civil that night, it was very flexible.
If we're gonna go to the high school, or middle school, and this is gonna be a four or five-hour deal, we're gonna hear the whole thing again. Uh, is there something gonna be?
How did you hear it already? I just wondered, how did you hear?
Sir, 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 we can speak after the meeting.
Sure.
Will, will, will we hold them to time somewhat so that we don't run into?
I spoke with, I spoke with Chairman Rock, and he managed the time at the meeting, and, um, he could, he said that it was very easy to tell where people were in their comments. And they were also informed about the time limit and that kinda stuff, so Chairman, uh, Rock was pretty compassionate in his, uh, you know, he kept people to time, but if somebody was like in the middle of a thought, you could tell it was wrapping up, he gave them a little more time, so, so I'd imagine, I'd imagine it's something along those lines. And so there's, there's gonna be a happy medium, but to answer your question, yes, we'll keep time and we'll be enforcing, if there's a, a large amount of people, we'll be enforcing the time limit. Because as it showed on Monday, it was seven P M, it started, and they, I mean, I, I got a phone call about the meeting at the end, about eleven fifteen, eleven thirty or so. So, I mean, we're gonna try to be as respectful as, as we can, also being respectful of everyone's time that's in the audience, that's all I can say.
Will the contractor or the developer be there as well?
That's, that's what our intention is.
I'm sorry, I'm getting confused now, because my understanding from the communication is that you're not, the developer is not coming to the.
No, the developer will be, the, the, the landowner will be present, that's our request, that's our, the landowner will be there, that's our request.
Can I ask just for, uh, maybe if, if, um, Mr. President, you can give a clarification at the beginning of the meeting or put something out, because it, this isn't a hearing, and that's what it was on the last one, was public comments.
It is.
It is, it is a public hearing, it has to be as per the zoning ordinance.
For this then, postpone it?
Our city statute, I'm sorry, we're, we're, the village board meeting, it's a public hearing, yes, for the annexation agreement.
Okay, so then it will be public comments, and then when we get to that in the meeting, or are we gonna do that at the very beginning then?
Um, we have two weeks to prepare for that, and I, I've tried, tried to start that today with some emails, so we could just talk about that.
There, there's a lot of late work that has to happen, and staff, and just staff is on it, and we're actively working with the property owner uh, in this conversation, as well as, uh, as well as the residents, as well.
Okay, can I, I mean, just, because we go from public comments to approving the minutes, to all kinds of, so we don't just.
It's gonna, it's gonna be fun.
It'll be a regular, it'll be a regular board meeting, we'll go through all of those things, including the public.
Okay.
It's gonna be a part of the board meeting.
Just to be sure, the, any public comments about the annexation agreement should not take place in the public comment section, but on, but as part of the public hearing, so that there's a good record of the comments that are directed at that matter.
We have a court reporter that will be there, so anybody that signs, signs up to speak, again, staff will be present, and it's gonna be asking, if you're signing up to speak to to something in the public hearing, you can speak during the public hearing, not during the course of a regular board meeting. At least, we can't stop anybody from speaking twice, we cannot stop anybody from speaking twice, but theoretically, if they're gonna be speaking about the annexation agreement, it should be part of the.
Will this developer come and try to present something different than what he presented at the public hearing?
And we need to clarify.
It's entirely his objective, we cannot coach him, we're not gonna.
But we, we also need to clarify, he's not a developer.
I just asked a question.
No, I know.
So I, you know, I'm entitled to ask.
Yeah, I, it's, it's, there's just a lot of misinformation out there, it's not, it's, please don't get frustrated with the.
Let me explain, trustee Fodor, we just don't know, trustee Fodor, that's all I'm trying to say.
And that's fine, but they can't change what they're trying to annex it to, or the code, or any of that, it has to be the original application title.
Right, yes, but, but it's not a developer, we need to be careful in what we say, it's not a developer, it's a landowner.
Landowner.
And it's not a zoning public hearing, it's an annexation agreement.
And so I know that there's a lot of, there's a lot of people paying attention, so I wanna make sure that we handle this the right way, so in answer to everyone's question, we have, we have rules that are in place as per our public hearing process, we have rules that are in place as per our, our village board, board conduct and that kinda stuff. And so, um, I haven't seen the transcript from the meeting, it's not, I mean, I, I have not seen it.
You don't have a transcript.
We, we don't have it yet, or what?
They're still trying to.
Oh, they're still trying.
They're not entitled to a transcript.
No, okay, so, but anyway, like I said, Chairman Rock is at your disposal, sorry, Chairman Rock, it's been at everybody's disposal, he's made this offer before. If you wanted to, like, you know, Mr. Hedges was there, um, you know, you can speak to either one of those two, if you wanna know what happened or how it happened, but again, there's a lot of moving parts to this, and we're just, we're gonna be at the ministry on the sixteenth, and we're gonna handle it the right way. So, and then, I, I'd be serious, I didn't mean to cut you off, we'll speak after the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next thing would be, um, just, oh, I'm sorry, I just have one more item here. On the My Hampshire app, we put an issue, I did put one there later today. Uh, but I, I know we've talked about this before, the list of issues there was not listed on what I wanted to put in there, so I put it in on the pop hole, and then I explained what the situation was, there was an item in the street that I felt was dangerous. Uh, it's a trestle with a light on it, the light stopped working, it's a very dark spot, uh, surprised somebody hasn't run into it, and.
And I put it in there on the pothole, because there's no section there that allows me to, other issue or anything that in the short list that we have there of situations, I'm not sure where we finished.
That, that's the right thing to do, just pick the closest thing, because we can see the description and our staff can see the script.
No, and, but we spoke last couple of board meetings ago, it's been a while, but that you guys were gonna investigate.
Well, the, the PR committee, we consider those.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry, PR.
That, and also putting out notifications that are not necessarily urgent.
That's on there. Trustee Potter, that's all on your agenda for the next PR meeting, right?
It was actually on the agenda in the last PR meeting.
Okay, so they're actively working on it, trustee.
Okay, I just wanted to pay attention, and I, I was gonna put it in a couple of days ago, and then I, I didn't put it in, and I went back and said, well, I gotta put it in somewhere. Uh, but I also did notice there are other trestles in, in the streets, it's guarding a, uh, a grate, but it's out on the street, and there's no street light over.
Trestle, you're talking about a barricade?
Barricade.
Okay.
It's a trestle with a flashy light on it, the flashy light's not working, and it's in a very dark place, you can't see it, you just run straight up to it. But also look, there's more trestles out there, and the lights were very dim, a bit hard to see, I'm just bringing that point.
Yeah, the batteries for those are expensive, to replace them is even more expensive. Um, and they don't put them out usually unless it's an emergency, uh, a big rainstorm washes a hole out, or something to that effect.
Well, just an observation, I come down to Tanyo Drive a lot, it's total pitch black, and surprised somebody hasn't run into, put one in the rear driveway.
No, I'm kidding. Um, thank you to the Hampshire Historical Society, uh, trustee Mont was involved with hanging, if you haven't, didn't pay attention to the hallway when you walked in, the hallway looks beautiful. Um, they've got a whole bunch of, I'll say, quote unquote artifacts, pictures from the past of our history, and they're gonna be adding more to it. Um, yep, right in here as you walk in. So it's, it's, it's beautiful, if you haven't seen it, check it out. Um, I also wanna address, uh, there's been a lot of comments made about flags in general. Um, whether or not the flags are gonna be returning to in front of the businesses, and then whether or not we're gonna be back to putting flags out at Henbeck Park and stuff. We banned some of that stuff because of the construction, of course. Um, um, we purchased and installed holders for the light poles that hold two flags on each light pole.
Actually, we, we manufactured those ourselves, we fabricated them in.
I apologize, so.
Sorry, I just wanted to get a little.
No, that's right, our, so we fabricated brackets for, for flags, so rather than the flags being in the, we had holes in the concrete for years, and then water would get into the holes, and they freeze and expand and crack and all this kinda stuff, and then you go to put the flags in, and water would go everywhere and get soapy and stuff. So we tried, we thought we'd try getting them up off the ground and putting them onto the flag poles after the construction. Um, also, the sidewalks got a little bit narrower due to the construction, so we didn't wanna push them further back, you know?
Really got one to drill holes in our new sidewalks.
You know, so there's a lot, there's a.
And he's the one that made it.
There's a, there's a lot of reasons why we did it the way we did. Uh, we're gonna be doing a trial run here pretty quick, uh, take some pictures and send it out to the board. Uh, Henbeck will have the uh posts installed in the ground, like we have holders in the ground. Um, they, a lot of them got tore up due to the construction, so those, that will be done in the next coming weeks, if it ever decides to turn to spring, like meteorological uh, spring on, on March first, but now we're expecting snow and ice and all that good stuff, so. Uh, Public Works will have that done before the next flag holiday, but here's the most important part I want to announce. The Boy Scouts, uh, local Cub Scout troops has agreed, have agreed to take on duties of putting the flags out downtown in Henbeck Park during flag holidays. Because we had a group of volunteers, uh, led by uh the tallest one here in the room, and uh he would, uh, he would, they would meet and put the flags up and down. Um, there's a set list of flag holidays that the, as you see, the Boy Scouts in town put the flags out for. Um, if we decide as a village that we wanna do downtown flags a little more often, we may have to have some staff involvement or more volunteers or whatever, but the Boy Scouts have agreed to uh, take on those flag duties as well. So if, main point, if you hear businesses complaining or, or concerned about the fact that they don't have the hole in the ground that they used to have in front of their businesses, we put them up on the flag poles, and we also got volunteers to take care of the, taking them up, putting them down.
And we also met personally with those businesses who wanted flag poles, and it's not what we do.
So this is just a different way to accomplish the same goal, we think it's gonna look better, and so I just wanted that out there, so the board knows in case there's concerns as we move forward.
I'm assuming it's the same gentleman that gave us thousands with the snowplow that has fabricated this?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh, probably. Can we celebrate that, either in the newsletter or in social media?
They save twenty-six, twenty-six bucks a bracket.
I mean.
I don't know how many brackets, eleven, I mean, it's not a lot of money.
No, but that's.
They, Jake just takes those opportunities.
You know, if we do.
We need to celebrate.
Well, so I think rather than going to the newsletter, maybe like when we do the dry run or something like that, we'll get a picture of the Public Works guys putting them up or something.
We did a special article about him specifically.
That's why I say I think this is another opportunity to.
He'd rather have a pizza. I'd rather have a pizza.
So then.
Trustee Robinson, we, we, we buy lunch for our guys.
Right, I know.
Hopefully tomorrow, the timing is right, it's supposed to warm up, so they's not too worried about tomorrow. Um, but we may take them to uh, press the food for lunch, or that way.
Right.
Or maybe pizzas, we, we buy them.
So just, just a recognition, you know, we appreciate them, okay? Give us our, give us.
Get a can, or you can take it home.
You give, give our, our, our sentiment to them instantly. All right, anything else?
Uh, just for those that celebrate, happy Hauli holiday next Wednesday.
Happy what?
Hauli, it's one of the major Hindu festivals of the year, so I'm sure we have residents celebrating.
That's right. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, trustee Coe. So move. Questions, comments, concerns? Oh, we gotta do roll call votes because we have one that's electronic, sorry, I was getting excited.
Ms. Fodder?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street, aye. Ms. Robinson, motion passed six zero.
All right, thank you very much.